Hi, Cupid. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pine Top Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum. I would ask that everybody in the audience, please silence your cellphones. And if you want to speak on any agenda item or during call to the public, you will need to submit a request. They're back there on the table, and you can bring those up to Kristi. I would like to ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tony.
Would you please bow your heads? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather as a community this evening to consider matters of importance to our town. We ask your blessing on the members of our town council, our staff, and members of the community gathered here tonight. We thank you for the opportunity to engage in thoughtful discussions on the items before the town council tonight. We ask your special blessing on our law enforcement personnel, firefighters, and first responders who work tirelessly to keep us safe every day. And with a new school year upon us, we pray for the children of our community, that they may have a safe and prosperous year. We also ask you to bless our educators for their commitment to guiding the young people who someday will become our future leaders. We pray for these things and give you thanks and glory in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you very much, Tony. Item B on the agenda tonight is Call to the Public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in Call to the Public is limited by the open meeting law. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda are not heard during Call to the Public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. First of all, I'll call Mr. Jim Gerard. Make sure you speak right into the red light there. Thank you.
No seniors should go hungry. For that matter, no one should go hungry. Hi, my name is Jim Gerard. I'm the board president of the White Mountain Meals on Wheels. Today, I'm here to ask for a donation in support of our local Meals on Wheels. Some facts: We deliver 71 meals a day to seniors. That would be five meals a week. Some of them are delivered food boxes as well. Twelve of those are Pine Top Lakeside seniors. Nine of those 12 are supplemented by NACOG. The other three are self-pay, paying what they can afford. NACOG funds 90%, and the Meals on Wheels must come up with the other 10%. I'm not going to do the math today, but in the past year, we have fed more than 30,000 seniors by delivery and in-house. My donation request today is $5,000. It is not just about the money. It's about helping our seniors in our community. All our seniors appreciate our delivery drivers bringing them food. We take a moment, see how they are doing. Meals on Wheels is not just about the nutritious meal delivered, but also about caring for our seniors. After all, the visit you make may save a life. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Jim. We appreciate all your efforts. Grace Smithson.
Hello, everyone. So my name is Grace Smithson, and I am the chairwoman for Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. We call ourselves MYAC, and what we do is every month, we meet with members of the town council, and we talk about issues that the youth in our town face, and we try to help out in the community with community service. And one thing that MYAC has been focusing a lot on in this past year through food donations and volunteer service is Backpack Snacks. So a little bit of background for Backpack Snacks is that they estimate that at least one in seven kids in Navajo County face food insecurity, which is when they do not always know where their next meal is coming from. They may have food some days or some weeks out of the year, but they don't have a steady food source at home. A lot of these kids are eligible for free and reduced lunch at schools, like Blue Ridge and Shallow, but on the weekend, these kids go home and they don't have any food. So Backpack Snacks is a local organization that collects non-perishable food like mac and cheese, canned soup and ravioli, ramen noodles, fruit cups, and granola bars. And then volunteers come in and bag it, which the town council has done for us multiple times. And then Backpack Snacks takes it to schools, and they distribute it to the kids on Thursday or Friday, which the kids can take over on the weekend. But especially at the beginning of the school year, Backpack Snacks is severely in need of donations. If anyone would like to donate food, you can drop off their donations at Helmet the Jeweler, Elevate Athletics, right here at Town Hall or Blue Ridge. There is also an Amazon wishlist and Venmo account provided on some brochures that I left on the back table and a flyer. And you can find more information about Backpack Snacks on the Facebook page Backpack Snacks White Mountain. And they really appreciate any donations, whether it's time or food. They can use everything to feed the kids at the White Mountains, so thank you.
Thank you, Grace, for all your work. This is definitely a worthy cause, and that donation box is out in the lobby out there for anybody that's interested. We appreciate your time, Grace. Martha Hayes.
I am blessed to live on this mountain. And I grew up in Michigan, and I understood water, because Michigan is a wonderful state with water. And so here I am in Pine Top. And what I'm concerned about is our pond down here. The major pond that the community, for three years at least, maybe four, donated money to create that park owned by this area. It was not just, it was owned by the state, and it's now owned by this area. And incredibly, somebody has come in with three graders, brand-new graders, and is ruining one of the parking spots. And that parking spot is by the fishing area. And that fishing area is where children can learn to fish. And they have also little boats that you can't use a motor with, that you can take your children out and enjoy the water. And for some reason, somebody mentioned to me that they are going to build a huge place for people to stay, sell liquor, which in this community, liquor is not appreciated. We have many churches in this community that do not believe in liquor. And fortunately, on the news the other night, the main speaker for the news station, because we watch the news, said that liquor, even one glass is not good for you. Two or three are worse. So why do we encourage liquor in our community, especially when the cars on our street are going 15 miles over the speed limit almost all the time? That is a real hazard. And so I recommend that whatever we use the places that board people now in our community for a week or night, because when I drive by, the parking lots are not full. So whatever you've done and whatever you're thinking about, please do not add another hotel that is just for overnight people. Thank you.
Mrs. Hayes, can I just ask for clarification? Which pond are you referring to?
Woodland Lake.
Woodland Lake, okay. I would encourage you to come in and talk to our staff about your concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't mind at all.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. We do appreciate it. Anybody else wish to speak in Call to the Public? Okay. Seeing none, then, we'll move on to Item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council requests that an item or item be removed for discussion. Council members, however, may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. Are there any questions from the council on any of these items? Okay. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Move on to Item D, which is Business Before the Council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item either before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 tonight is Consider Approving Resolution Number 24-1730, Declaring and Adopting the Results of the Primary Election Held on July 30, 2024. Kristi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. The state statute requires the council to canvass and adopt the results of every election that we have. And on July 30 of 2024, the town held a primary election for the purpose of electing one council member for a two-year term. We had Jeff Phillips running unopposed, and he was, he received a majority vote. 841 counts, votes, I'm sorry. He will be sworn in at the November 21 Town Council meeting. We do have three council members terming. That's Council Member Craig Baum, Council Member Snitzer, and Council Member Smith. So we had three seats open for a four-year term. We had four candidates. We did receive three candidates that had majority vote. Those were Jennifer Brimhall receiving 759 votes, Todd Fornow receiving 672 votes, Harry Turner receiving 566 votes, and Council Member Smith, Jerry Smith, receiving 470 votes. So what we need to do today is just adopt the results. And I have the, in the agenda behind the resolution, I have the official results from the county there, and then that will go into our record, and we'll adopt, well, we will swear them all in on November 21st.
Any questions or comments for Kristi?
Do I need to recue?
I don't think so. Are there any questions, a motion? Counselor Heisler?
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-1730, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on July 30, 2024.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. We look forward to working with the new council members starting in November. Item D2 tonight is a public hearing, discussion and consideration of Ordinance Number 24-473, adopting Town Code Title 17, Chapter 17.08.055, Placement of Manufactured Homes. Jeremiah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This item, as promised earlier in this year, I discussed this with council that I would be bringing forward a proposed amendment to the placement of manufactured homes and restricting those. The reasoning rationale behind that is to reduce code enforcement and, amongst other things, but primarily, it's my main driver of code enforcement and abatements. It uses, the last couple of years, it's used my funds for abatements entirely, just mitigating older manufactured homes. So that's what's driving this. And there's other factors, too. The purpose of placement of manufactured mobile homes within the town of Pine Top Lakeside to those that are no older than 10 years, and they're data manufacturers, too. One, preserve the aesthetic standards of the community. Two, ensure all dwellings adhere to modern health, safety, and environmental regulations. Three, maintain and elevate property values throughout the community. Four, reduce the demand for local code enforcement and abatement resources, as I mentioned. Ensure all development is of high quality per the adopted general plan. And the code, if adopted tonight, would read as follows. It would be placed as 1708055, Placement of Manufactured Homes. As defined in this code, built before June 15, 1976, mobile homes may not be moved into Pine Top Lakeside or from lot to lot in Pine Top Lakeside. Manufactured modular homes is defined within this code. Park models 10 years and older may not be moved into Pine Top Lakeside or from lot to lot in Pine Top Lakeside. Manufactured modular or park model homes meeting the above guidelines shall be permitted within zoning districts that allow such uses if they conform to the following additional requirements. They must be adequately anchored and attached to the foundations supporting vertical loads, uplift, and lateral forces. There shall also be a concrete masonry unit, skirting, or other approved skirting material. The community development director may approve such other material. In all installations, the bottom of the lowest I-beam will be at least six inches above the finished grade at any point and comply with Pine Top Lakeside's floodplain regulations. It must also have a minimum width of 20 feet, excluding park models. Be covered with an external material customarily used on conventional dwellings, such as comp board or T-111 vinyl or aluminum siding. The only exception being that doors that provide access to equipment closets, such as water heaters and furnaces. And finally, if a garage, carport, or room addition is constructed, the exterior, external material and roofing shall be the same as the dwelling unit. Additionally, asphalt shingles, metal roofing, or other acceptable materials shall be used. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions for Jeremiah? Okay. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Just looking at A and B, I mean, A is defining this code built before June 15, 1976, which is basically moot, because B states can't be older than 10 years, right?
Right, so the definition, that time, June 15, 1976, is when the HUD code was established. And so mobile homes became manufactured homes at that time. So at no point would a mobile home be allowed in the town of Pine Top Lakeside. So that excludes them at that, also. It's a duplicate. It says the same thing, though, basically. It can be allowed if it's from 1976, and there's no such thing as a mobile home that's built 10 years ago, within the past 10 years.
Any other questions for Jeremiah? This is a public hearing. Is there, oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
Just a question. What impact would this have on tiny homes?
So tiny homes, if they're built under the IRC, they're not part of this. The closest it comes to it is park models, which are included. They'd have to be the same requirement, not.
Okay. Any other questions before we go into public hearing? So this is a public hearing. Any member of the public may speak on this issue if there is anybody interested. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, then. Any other comments from the council or a motion? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve Ordinance Number 24-473, adopting Town Code Chapter 17.08.055, Placement of Manufactured Homes.
I second that.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. Are there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeremiah. We'll move on, then, to Item D3, which is a public hearing, information discussion, and consideration of Resolution Number 24-1731, approving a minor amendment to the Town of Pine Top Lakeside 2015 General Plan Land Use Element. Jeremiah.
Good evening again, Mayor Irwin, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This item tonight before you is for consideration is an amendment to the land use element, currently reflected as low density in the area under consideration at the corner of Shallow Lake Road and White Mountain Boulevard. On July 11, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended the approval of a minor amendment for the Lake Point development. This amendment proposes to reclassify approximately 11.8 acres along White Mountain Boulevard and Shallow Lake Road from low density to community commercial in the land use element of the general plan. Additionally, the commission recommends designing, designating the area behind this community commercial zone for plan development, paving the way for establishing a gated townhome community covering roughly 19.2 acres. The vicinity map is included in the packet in front of you. The current land use element, as discussed, shows this area as low density, and it has also a trail component. In the 2022 major amendment to the land use element, the planning commission and the town council designated this area for a community commercial along White Mountain Boulevard with a planned development zone behind this frontage. However, the major amendment was withdrawn due to looming threat of referendum and anticipation that the town would revise the map within a year. This decision came before the realization that the town lacked the legal right to update the general plan to seek voter approval for such changes, primarily because our community did not meet the required 2% growth rate, in fact reflected in the 2020 census. This minor amendment from low-density residential to community commercial and plan development land uses would allow, would enable a zoning change from our low zoning district, one acre per dwelling unit, to see one light commercial and planned development. The surrounding area features a mix of low-density housing, forest, and community commercial spaces. Additionally, there is a designated planned development area within Mountain Gate to the northwest of the proposed site. The proposal aims to preserve the existing planned trail access, which remains unaffected by the changes depicted in the developers' proposed trails and identified in the areas on the effective land use element. Properties along White Mountain Boulevard are predominantly designated as community commercial, with this site being a notable exception. From a planning standpoint, adopting a community commercial land use designation would strengthen the existing framework along the majority of White Mountain Boulevard. The planned development designation located directly behind and adjacent to the community commercial area would pave the way for a PUD, fostering harmonious integration of commercial and residential spaces. This approach would significantly enhance the community's diversity and vibrancy and increase the available housing stock and hotel inventory while creating additional shopping venues. It is essential to recognize these factors, such as traffic issues, lot layout, and specific site characteristics, including grading and drainage. And environmental impacts will be addressed within the framework of site plan as per 1784 for commercial components. Additionally, for the residential portion, these considerations will adhere to the subdivision guidelines established in ARS 9-463.02 and the town subdivisions with regulations outlined in Title 16. Also, it's worth mentioning that we have two longitudinal studies voicing the concern of the larger community and identifying a need for additional shopping venues. And that's to conclude my second report.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Before we open up the public hearing, are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, I will start calling folks up to the podium. Dave Hendricks.
Hi, my name is Dave Hendricks. My wife and I and our two kids own and operate the White Mountain Family Farm Park right across the road, basically from this development. My concern that I have, that I'm bringing to the town right now, I'm pro-growth, so I want everybody to know that. I'm not wanting to stop. I know that, you know, a lot of people would like to see the forest. I came here, there was forest, but obviously, it's going to probably eventually be built up. But my concern would be the noise. Our farm park has go-karts that are loud, and I just want to, I don't know what stage that it needs to happen, but the people that are going to be purchasing or, you know, the property across the road, when I say purchasing, the final development, I've seen the plans for the townhomes and then also the hotel, that they're aware that there is a family entertainment center that is, you know, operates, that's loud. Donnie Buckles, that lives clear at the end of that road, can hear our go-karts in the evenings when the road dies down. And when there's road noise, it's not a problem, but as soon as it dies down, which after everybody gets home from work, you know, 5:30, 6 o'clock, he can hear that, and he's clear past it. So I just wanted to state that, and I don't know if there's anything that can be done with this development moving forward that would say, hey, you're buying here? It's just like when you build, when you buy over top of an airport or in an area where the flight path is. I don't want to be the airport that's sitting there trying to fight people because they bought, you know, someplace, and it's loud. We have music at our place, you know. We do have, we don't open, we're not open all night long, but it is a commercial property, and just by the nature of our property, it is a loud property. I mean, we have, anybody who's been there knows that we have loud announcements, we have loud speakers, we have loud go-karts. So I just wanted to come and state that, and like I said, I don't know if there's any way that as this moves forward, something could be put on record that says, hey, you bought here. This is in your deed that you cannot sit there, I mean, anybody can gripe about anything, but I don't want to be seeing lawsuits or anything coming towards me because our farm park is here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for paying that to our attention, and I do believe you're already complying with our noise ordinances. And I can't imagine that there would be any changes in the requirements on you, and I believe the developer is fully aware that you're over there.
Yeah, I mean, we're in compliance with that. I just know that if people come to relax for the weekend, they might not want to hear go-karts, and please remain seated until directed exit all day long. So that's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
I'll just say one thing.
Of course.
I appreciate your comparison to the airport, because being in the real estate business for many years, a lot of people complain about Luke Air Force Base, and they live right next to it.
Yeah.
And they bought there, you know, while it was still, still in operation, I mean, you know, currently in operation. So, yeah, they, people do that. They just don't pay attention or something.
Just to add to it, I was born and raised in Iowa. Iowa's a farming community. It's a farming state. And I saw, I'm 51 years old, and I saw in my life people that were three, four-generation farms have the town grow out around them, and they end up getting the pig farmer kicked out that was feeding everybody. And it literally has happened. It's not right, but they end up getting them kicked out, usually by eminent domain, because it's deemed a nuisance. Nobody wants to smell it, but they moved in and bought a new house well knowing that that farmer was there. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Peck.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I have lived in Pine Top for 18 years as a homeowner, and many years before that, just a visitor to Pine Top. And I believe that growth is good, and this project sounds to me like a very positive growth idea. And the length of time that I've lived here and also been a visitor here in the 80s, when we moved our family cabin from Holly Lake to Pine Top and became Pine Top people in the 80s, there've been a lot of things that have come and not been completed to fruition and ideas that town council and many, many years before all of you got excited about and got residents excited about, and then they just fell apart. And I just would hate to see that happen, because this, in my opinion, there are, this would bring, hopefully, moderately priced housing, which we know we need more moderately priced housing. If there's condos or maybe rentals that would be condos that could be rented, the housing for the hotel. Shallow gets these beautiful hotels, and we don't. You know, we need, a nice new hotel would be exciting. It would bring something more to Pine Top Lakeside. Opportunities to shop. The hotel for overnight or visitors. I myself visited many times and fell in love and imagined, I want to move up here. I want to live here. And now I feel so blessed that I do. And I don't think we can put a limit. And I don't think we can put a limit on, you know, God created this community that we get to live in, and we, I think we should have arms that are open to allow people to come and visit, and if they want to buy and live here, they, they can. So, I just, maybe I didn't want to sound like I'm preaching, but I believe there's plenty of trees and forests that will be retained all around the White Mountain area in our town limits, and if our annexation regrow, I think the growth, this sounds like a quality development that will only enhance Pine Top Lakesides within our limits, and the, not to mention the income. You know, I'm at the library and I see people come all the time who are moving here, and they want to live here, and we should let them. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you, Betsy.
Eduardo Coronado.
Could I address you, Mayor?
Did you set in a card?
I wrote his name on there because he was stuck in Holbrook and not going to be able to be here.
So, this other one's not you? That's a duplicate?
He's right behind you.
Okay. He's right behind you.
I'm sorry, I didn't see him.
Okay.
I, I know, I'm very thankful you people can't- I did as good as I could.
That's okay. Make sure you don't shuffle your papers in front of the microphone, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council. My name's Eduardo Coronado. I own the property that is, that is right adjacent to the proposed development, proposed change in zoning, almost at the corner of Sholo Lake Road and White Mountain Boulevard. The office is across the street from the go-karts, and obviously, this proposal will greatly affect the, the value of my, of my property, so that's why I'm, I'm interested. But there's other issues too. I know that at the beginning of this particular section, there were a lot of conclusory statements made that this project will increase betterment of the community. This is basically coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission, that it will do this and it will do that, and it will not negatively affect the community or, or the, the property. But in my, in my view, those were all conclusory statements, meaning I didn't see any examples of any research attributed to those statements. So, there's no environmental study or assessment to assess the impact that the construction would have on wildlife, bald eagles, Mexican spotted owl. This area that is being contemplated is a wildlife corridor for elk, deer, bear, coyotes, bald eagle nesting around the property. I didn't hear anything about an archaeological study that would provide information to the council, to the townspeople, that backs up these statements made and approved by Planning and Zoning. Everything is just pure conclusory statements without any research, without any evidence, and that is very worrisome. For example, was the state, state historic preservation office being contacted? My understanding is that there are several ruins, old ruins, from early homesteaders that are in that vicinity, and it's a historic cemetery. There's been talk about this supposed stoplight that might go there, at that precise corner, but no information as to any assessment, as to what it's going to cost, who's going to pay for it, can it even be done? And that is my concern, is all these statements sound very lofty, but without any proper research, assessment, they are that, they're lofty ideas, and that's great. As far as I'm concerned regarding my interest, to me, changing the zoning amounts to a taking of my property, because, and a lot of the property owners surrounding that area are in the same situation. They bought property, zoned a particular way, with their adjacent property being zoned in a particular way, and now that zoning is going away. So, the developers expected the zoning, it's there, it should not be changed. Everybody had a perspective of it, including the, the proposed property developers. We're just asking that there be no change in the zoning, because it's already zoned the way it's zoned, especially regarding the housing.
Thank you, Mr. Coronado.
Thank you.
Yeah, hang on, just a minute.
One, one question, Mr. Coronado. What is your property zoned? What's the zoning on your property?
I know it's commercial, I don't know exactly what, what type.
Basically, the same as what this property's going to be zoned?
I don't believe so. I'm, I'm very concerned about the property that's going to be changed from low density to a PUD.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Heiser. Hang on just a second.
Mr. Coronado, I just had a question. Did you build your business there?
That's a very broad question. Are you talking about the building or the business?
Well, I'm, I'm asking about the building itself.
I bought the building when it was already built.
Okay.
But I was part of the business when it was being built. That's why I'm asking that question is-
My, my curiosity was just to the point that you built a commercial business in the same general vicinity that we're talking about, changing some zoning on some property to allow some commercial and development to go in, and I was just curious if you guys provided an environmental study, an archaeological study, and a wildlife study when you put, when you built your project in that area?
I, I gotta say, I'm going to take a little bit of exception to your question, because it's a, what about you? We're not here about me, but I'll tell you this, we didn't make any changes, as far as I can remember. I was not the owner, like I said, I bought it when it was already built. It was, it was about six or seven years old when I bought it. I had worked in that property, because before it was even built, I was already working in that business, but I was not the owner.
And I wasn't trying to point at you or anything like that, I'm merely trying to say that, you know, what's good for one is good for all, and so, expecting one potential developer to, to have to put in work that maybe other developments in the area didn't have to do, doesn't seem reasonable to me from a, from a policy perspective.
Yeah, and, and the key word there is maybe, when you said maybe. I don't remember making, or requesting any changes to the zoning. This is a request in change in the zoning. That, that commercial building was that, already zoned, to be able to put that type of property on there. This is a request to change from low density to a higher density, which adversely affects my property, but everybody adjacent to that property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Rick Ferno.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Rick Ferno. I live at 5049 High Drive in Lakeside, that's behind Joey's Furniture. I guess my only comment is, I think we all, most of us in this room probably remember the Kmart project that, that happened across from the Pine View Shopping Center, and at that time, the city of Sholo did not require a performance bond. So, I would just ask that the city be sure, before any project like this goes forward, that a performance bond is required in case during the project they can't complete it, and it can at least be restored to some level as it was before. I realize it wouldn't be the same as before, but enough money, the performance bond needs to be large enough to guarantee that that project is either completed, or the property is returned to some form similar to what it was. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Rob Ingalls.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to stick directly with the general plan amendment, and I will make a couple statements that are quotes right out of our general plan. One of them is that "The town has limited resources and authority to implement the plan. It is only through diligence and concerted effort of the citizens of Pine Top Lakeside that this plan can be truly realized." And for the plan to be amended, there are a whole bunch of different, the land use goals, circulation goals. As an example, it's a circulation goal in here does say, "Plan for a safe, effective, cost-effective transportation system in a manner that accommodates current demands as well as anticipated growth." And having two properties within the Sholo Lake Estates and planning to move there later in life, where the sun shines a little more than it does, I have traffic concerns already. And I think with the amendment of the plan and the designation on the future land use map going to plan development, a couple of things I would say, this is right out of one of the appendices, which does fall back to 2001, the general plan that we had before the 2015. Plan development standards shall be of a type and density that is compatible with adjacent land uses and all other elements of, at that point, it was a regional plan. Plan developed areas, I'm sorry, plan development areas shall incorporate a circulation and improvement plan, shoot, I jumped around here, for the primary access through either an existing or planned intersection with Highway 260 in order to promote, promote effective traffic flows and efficient infrastructure expansion. I talked with our Assistant District Engineer of ADOT yesterday, and we're not even on a five-year plan for upgrades at this point, for anything at that intersection. So, as we move ahead into rezoning with the potential for commercial, and what I would say, a much higher density residential than, than is allowed, let's try to comply with the general plan, plan development standards. One of the standards here, transition zones between residential uses shall be at a density no greater than twice the existing zoning density of adjacent residential properties. Also, setbacks from adjacent existing residential property boundaries and building heights in the transition zone shall be the same, and it says shall, as the, as applicable to the adjacent property. So, our low standards, and to consider amending the general plan for planned development, there's some criteria in there that I think is submittal for a use after it would be considered planned development. This should be adhered to. And because I've been at a planning and zoning meeting where things were other than very clear, I have some concerns about the proposed or conceptual site plan meeting the criteria as it was presented to the plan development standards that say they shall be adhered to. So, I, at this point, if the council chooses to move into amending the general plan, I think it's important that we look at the other elements, circulation, open space, cost of development, what changes, how that's going to affect the surrounding area, and make sure that as we move beyond that planned development designation, that we're complying with that, and trying to meet the purpose of the overall general plan. And some of the vision statements and the community goals and development policy is, the general plan encourages a balanced land use pattern that respects the environment, private property rights, and preservation of community character. With that, I'm done, and, yes?
Question, what you just read was, where was it from? What were you reading from?
It is Section 4.1-19, Pine Top Lakeside and Navajo County Regional Plan, March 2001, and it's specifically-
That, that plan does, might as well not exist.
No, no, I-
It was superseded by a later plan. What does the later plan say, because that's the one that's active now, or what do the, what do the rules that we have in place from the town say? I appreciate, that was a great general plan, it was 80 pages, but, but that was then, and this is now. And of the, the general plan that we are under now, doesn't say what you just said. That was an old plan that said that.
The general plan that is 2015, that is in effect now, references an appendix to the 2001 general plan, a regional plan that was worked on by the citizens, voter deposit, and it was specifically included in the 2015 plan as an appendix.
Which means for information. It doesn't govern the, the plan, the plan tells you what governs the plan, but the appendix is just background information, right? I mean, I mean, that's my understanding. It's background information, it's not, it's not codified.
I believe there is text that goes along with the future land use map, and plan development only exists in the future land use map. It's not a zoning district.
Right.
So, as we evolve, in my opinion, to create a zoning district, the criteria in the future land use map and the definitions in the text are important to be referred to.
I, I agree they're important, but I would say that as a council, our actions have to be governed by the current general plan. We could just as easily go back to the 1990 general plan or the Articles of Incorporation of the Town, but we're governed now by the general plan we're under now.
Correct, I agree.
Okay.
So, let's follow the general plan that we have, and if we need to amend it, then criteria should be-
But the general plan we have now doesn't specifically call for that. It just, you know, here's some information, but it doesn't call for it. It's not, if they'd wanted to, they should, could have said, this general plan incorporates the prior general plan, and, and it doesn't.
Well, I maybe have a different opinion with the condensation or condensing of the general plan.
You and I both worked on the current general plan, so we both know, if we really wanted to, if we'd really wanted to just roll over that 80-page general plan, we would have done it. We went very far out of our way to put that 80-page general plan behind us and come up with the four-page general plan we have now, because we thought the old plan did not meet our needs. You were part of that, I was part of that. Didn't meet our needs, we needed a completely new general plan.
I, I would disagree with you in saying that the goal of condensing the general plan was to make it clear and focused and easy to understand, and that's why it became more of an outline or a structure with a lot of different strategies, implementation. I didn't go into all that, because it's been online and adopted for nine years now, and any of you or the citizens have access to that, as well as the regional plan, by just clicking on it, and it brings that information up. And that's why I thought it was relevant to share as you're looking at amending the general plan.
Thank you for your comments, Rob.
Thank you for your comments, Rob.
Thank you.
Appreciated. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on item D three tonight? I thought you said four, Cupid.
And Madam Mayor, Mr. Facet would like to speak.
Okay. I'm sorry, Cupid, you put down D four, which is the next item?
This is not D, zoning, it's the next one. This is for the minor amendment to the general plan. Zoning is the next one.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Facet, would you like to address this?
Yeah. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilpeople. Do you want me to go over like the whole general, everything about the project now, or do you want me to save that for?
I think the project itself would really be in the zoning section, which is D four. I didn't know if you had any comments on D three that you wanted to bring up with us or not.
No, I think, I mean, Mr. Ingles said it pretty good when he, you know, anticipated growth in the, in the general plan, I feel like this does a pretty good job of anticipating the growth. And, and, you know, perform, like, being just a, a nice part for the city that, that can be a highlight for the, for the city and have a place for entertainment and housing and, and hotel and, and event space that, that the whole community can use. It's really for the whole community, it's open to the community, and can be a point of pride there. So I think in terms of the minor amendment, I'm okay.
Okay, wanna make sure. So on the, the minor land use map amendment, is there anybody else who wants to talk to that one? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing then. Jeremiah, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
I just failed to mention that there was three petitions filed for this item and the following item, which are related. And just to clarify the difference between the land use element and zoning, land use element and the general plan guides zoning, but it's not zoning, just for a point of clarification. But yeah, I failed to mention that earlier, I should've mentioned that there was three petitions filed opposing, two of them opposing, and one that was to try to force a supermajority vote tonight, but that didn't meet the criteria after reviewing it with the town attorney.
Okay, thank you, Jeremiah. Counsel, any discussion, questions, comments?
Just, one point of discussion, most people's concerns will probably fall further down the road when you talk about, you know, site plan approval for a specific project. At this point, right now, we're just talking about zoning.
That's correct.
Actually, at this point, we're talking about the minor land.
Yeah, the land amendment, yes.
First one, my next item is zoning. So, so this is just changing the general plan land use map currently.
Correct.
So, just clarifications, staff, did you have anything to add? Okay. Counsel, what is your wishes, what are your wishes, Vice Mayor?
Give me a motion.
Ready?
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash one seven three one, approving a minor plan amendment to the 2015 general plan land use element, thereby amending the general plan land use element from low-density residential to community commercial along White Mountain Boulevard and Cholo Lake Road for eleven point eight plus or minus acres, also amending the land use element from low-density residential to planned development for the remaining nineteen point two plus or minus acres.
I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion to second, it's a further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Okay, we're gonna move on then to item D four, which is a public hearing, discussion and legal action for ordinance number twenty-four dash four seventy-four regarding Z eighty-nine, a zoning amendment from Arlo to C one for eleven point eight plus or minus acres along the southeast corner of Cholo Lake Road and White Mountain Boulevard, and nineteen point two plus or minus acres from lowest density residential to planned unit development. Jeremiah?
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, Vice Mayor Abuse, and members of the council. This is the companion item to the previous item, this is actually the zoning amendment, Z eighty-nine. On July eleventh, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously endorsed the approval of Z eighty-nine, a zoning amendment for the Lake Point Development. This amendment seeks to reclassify roughly thirty-one acres along White Mountain Boulevard and Cholo Lake Road. Z eighty-nine comprises two components. The amendment would consist of eleven point eight acres transitioning from Arlo to C one along the southeast corner of Cholo Lake Road and White Mountain Boulevard along these streets, and nineteen point two acres from Arlo to planned unit development, PUD to the east of the area proposed for C one zoning. The total acreage for the affected parcels is approximately thirty-one acres. The community has long debated the need for high-end quality development, and this proposed high-end project promises to boost the regional economy by adding new shopping, a new shopping center, hotel options, enhancing our tourism-driven financial landscape. The applicant also plans to build townhomes behind the commercial developments requiring PUD zoning. If approved, this amendment will facilitate the creation of a gated townhome community spanning approximately nineteen point two acres. Cooper Properties LLC, the developer, has submitted a request for zoning amendment for thirty-one point oh-five acre site located at the southeastern corner of Cholo Lake Road and White Mountain Boulevard. Proposed amendment seeks to change the current zoning from Arlo residential to light commercial and planned unit development. The development plan includes the construction of a hotel, a market, and a shopping center, which will serve as a precursor to the subdivision they plan to construct as detailed in the conceptual plan submitted by the applicant. This proposal is in line with the goals outlined in the adopted strategic plan, specifically under the strengthening and diversifying our economic base category. Moreover, it supports the vision statement's goals, foster a growing and diverse economy that offers meaningful employment opportunities and enhances residents' and visitors' quality of life. Furthermore, the application is consistent with the growth area goals of the 2015 general plan, which identifies areas particularly suited for planned multimodal transportation and infrastructure expansion. These improvements aim to support a planned mix of residential, office, commercial, and tourism uses. Additionally, it emphasizes the importance of increasing activity in certain areas by utilizing shared resources, aligning with the second item within this category. Proposed zoning amendment facilitates mixed-use development, combining residential and commercial spaces. It enables the construction of a hotel and a marketplace featuring retail outlets along Cholo Lake Road. Furthermore, it permits the development of a residential community adjacent to the hotel and shopping center, enhancing the area's livability and convenience.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Are there any questions from Jeremiah, for Jeremiah, at this point? At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Facet to come up and talk about his proposed plans for this property, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I got that wrong last time. My wife, my wife was actually born and raised in her hometown, she graduated from Blue Ridge High School. She's at home watching, and she sent me a text and said, "You messed that up." So, I apologize for that. I apologize for that. So just a little background on myself, I'm a third-generation Arizonan, my grandmother was actually born in Globe, and so we've been deep roots in the, in the state. The other two partners in the back are also natives from Arizona, and outdoorsman, been in the White Mountains, coming up here for decades and decades. And so we understand the uniqueness and what the pull is to Pinetop. And when we had the opportunity for this project, we wanted to do something special to leave a legacy, you know, for our kids and grandkids, and, and make something that would enhance the community. So we're not some, you know, people from California that are coming in and don't understand the uniqueness and the, what makes Pinetop so special. So, you know, we wanna work with, Darrell was actually a landscape architect, and so that's his background, looking at the trees, looking at the contours of the land, to really utilize that and make it something special. I know that when we got, had a chance to walk the property, you, you got a chance to see the giant rock outcropping, that would really be the focal point of the hotel. It's a, it's probably a twenty, twenty-five foot drop-down, and it's, it's a cove in there, it's a really special place, and it could be really, like, for special events, homecoming, prom, reunions, weddings, you know, like, I think it would be a real driver for the community to have a point of pride as a conference center. And then, the other focus is, is on the community center, and that would be like an all-weather, pickleball has been like the fastest-growing sport in America for a decade, and so we would have, you know, pickleball, outdoor games, somewhere where the community could come together, enjoy the weather, enjoying the pine trees. You know, there's a lot of old-growth trees on there, and so the parking lot would not be just a scraped piece of asphalt, although Councilwoman Lynn was pretty excited to get to drive the, the paver there. And so, you know, the, the special occasions, weddings, the highlight, we, you know, have some shops, and so we wanna bring some local shops in, which would also help increase the tax revenue that would then benefit some of these other programs that we got to hear about earlier with the, the mobile eatery and the library, and, you know, other things to help support the community. As we talk, you know, we, we've had quite a few meetings with the neighbors, one-on-one, with local developers, with engineers, and we've tried to take all of that into consideration. And so I know that the buffer zones are important, and so, you know, in the pathways, I know, coming up here for the last eighteen years, visiting my mother and father-in-law, it's always great to either go mountain biking or, or take advantage of the amazing paths that, that Pinetop has. And so we'd wanna continue that along the border and create another buffer zone, and then along Cholo Lake Road, where we can, you know, encourage people to be out and walking, especially at the hotel or, or that, you know, like, take advantage of the amazing pathways throughout the, the town. We're working with local engineers, we, we engaged with Painted Sky, and they did all of our survey work, they did the original, the CAD drawings and where we placed everything. And so we've been working with them, we had a meeting with Bruce, Bruce Ironside, also just to, you know, talk about the developmental side and some of the challenges that we may see. We've met with the utility companies, so the natural gas, electric with Nav Apache, Arizona Water Company, the sewer company, fire, and so, because we wanted to make sure that they had the capacity to, to service this project, and, and every single provider said that that would be, that would be fine. Like, the services are already along White Mountain Road, we would have to go under, you know, to the pump station there that's across the street, but, but they can handle the, the load, which was very important. And then, something else that, you know, with the, with the plant, the PUD space, we're over the thirty percent in terms of the open space, and then for the commercial, the requirement's less than fifty percent in terms of buildings on the, on the property, we're actually under thirty percent. So we're well under that, that requirement to be fifty percent or less in terms of buildings. Let's see. So that's kind of the, a general overview of the project. And, you know, our goal, like I said, is, is really to build something special, something that the town can be proud of, something that the town can use as a community center, and, and to get together for events, and just increase the, the positive visibility of, of Pinetop. I think Jeremiah said it great with his synopsis, so I don't need to go over that. So what we're proposing is, is a C one in front of the, the, the front portion, I don't know if there's a map, there was a map last time, but, that would mirror all the properties along White Mountain Road and across the street. So this one, for, for some reason, is, was never converted to commercial, and then a planned urban development in the back. And so, as you know, just because we have the zoning, it doesn't give us free rein to do whatever we want. All of that still has to meet all the town codes, and we're gonna, you know, I think we've proven that we wanna listen to the, the community, meet with the neighbors, try to collaborate, collaborate and make something really special, instead of just bulldozing down and, and doing, you know, some, something like California where it's just, you know, going ten stories high that we couldn't do anyways, but, and then, you know, after the input, we've made some changes in terms of some of our design plans, but those would all have to be approved before any shovels hit the ground. And then, you know, some of the, the concerns we've heard a lot of is the traffic, I, I don't know how to get around the traffic, I think, I've been up here numerous times in the summer and there's just traffic. And I don't, I don't, you know, I don't think that this would increase traffic, if anything, it would increase traffic potentially through Cholo, and potentially lessen the traffic through town, because maybe they wouldn't come all the way through town all the time. In terms of property values, you know, with a quality project, I've, I've been a, a real estate agent and broker for twenty-four years, and I've never seen a nice project hurt the property values. You know, like, it's like the rising tide lifts all ships type of deal. So, so we're not putting, you know, Quanza Hunts in, we're putting nicer stuff in and a place of focal point for the town. You know, lots of trees, obviously there'd be some just because of the development, but we're, we're very dedicated to keeping that buffer zone along Cholo Lake Road and the neighbors, to make sure that, one, we don't have to look at, you know, them, and they don't have to look at us, but it also creates that nice aesthetic feel that people are coming up here to enjoy. In terms of the wildlife, there are wildlife on that property, if they tend to, if you look at the property, there's kind of a wet zone along the, the backside, and, and on the map, there's a, there's a giant blue area that actually is very close to Mr. Coronado's property, and that would all be just a buffer zone. And so that's where the, the animals, when we've seen them, they, they tend to go often over that side, and so we don't believe that they'll be disrupted very much, although I did see a deer the other day walking down the main road. So I, you know, I don't know how opposed they are to, to buildings. You know, out-of-towners, obviously, when I was reading that Keith sent over today, a lot of the comments were, you know, who, "We're from here, where are you from?" and this and that. Well, you know, we're, we're third-generation Arizonans, like, we're, we're from here, we have a lot of pride in the state, and we wanna do something special for it. So that's kind of the project. Here's the, the general map, oh, I see, yeah, the blue zone there is, is what borders Mr. Coronado's. And then actually, Mr. Coronado's, there's a, another C, commercial zoning property between ours and his on the frontage road of, of White Mountain Boulevard.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. One question and one concern that's come up is the, the topic of a signal light right there at the intersection of Cholo Lake Road and White Mountain Boulevard. I, you stated before, I think that you're willing to work with that.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, we've, we've done some research, it's really hard to get anybody at ADOT to call you back, I called like seven people this week, so I don't know how you, you got, Mr. Ingles got, got, got ahold of somebody, maybe I get his contact. Right, yeah, he's got the bad phone. So yeah, we're willing us to pay, and, and from our research, it's, it's a two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar bill to, to do that, and so, depending on how that works out, we would definitely be, be looking at something like that.
And that's something that you, as the developer, would be thinking about?
Yeah, ideally, we could partner with the, the development straight across the street, the RV park, and, and soften the blow for everybody, but if needed, then that would be the route we'd go.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we open up the public hearing? I would just like to thank you for walking the property. We've kind of individually gone with Mr. Facet and walked and seen where this bowl is that you're talking about. I think that has a lot of potential, it really is kind of a unique spot, you really can't tell it's there if you don't actually walk on the property, so thanks for taking the time.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
So at this point in time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing, and I've got quite a few people that would like to speak to this issue. So first, I'm gonna call up Mike Mothenvire.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and fellow residents. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Mike Mothenvire, and I have the privilege of being the President of the Chamber of Commerce for Pinetop Lakeside. I'm here to express our support for the change for the proposed development for our beautiful community. Pinetop Lakeside has long been known as a destination for those seeking natural beauty, tranquility, and outdoor recreation. Our unique environment draws visitors from all over, contributing significantly to our local economy. However, in order to continue attracting visitors and supporting our community's growth, we must support developments that enhance our offerings and create new opportunities. The proposed development will bring a multitude of economic benefits to Pinetop Lakeside, from the creation of jobs both during construction and for long-term employment opportunities, to the increased revenue for local businesses that will undoubtedly come from an influx of tourists. This project stands to be a much-needed boost for our economy. Additionally, the development will generate significant tax revenue that can be reinvested into our community, supporting public services, infrastructure, and other critical needs. As a chamber, we understand the importance of maintaining the character and charm that makes Pinetops Lakeside special. The developers of this project have demonstrated a commitment to preserving the natural beauty of our area, while also providing world-class amenities that will elevate our town's status as a premier destination. This project will not only enhance tourism experience, but also bolster our town's identity as a place where visitors can enjoy luxury while staying connected to nature. We are also encouraged by the developers' focus on sustainability and community engagement. Their plans include environmentally responsible practices that align with our town's values in respect for the land. Moreover, they have been open to feedback and have shown a willingness to work collaboratively with local stakeholders, ensuring that the development will be an asset to everyone in Pinetop Lakeside. Should the rezoning be approved, there is still a long road ahead for the developer. Land studies and all government requirements must be met. While we're all aware of the current challenges in our community regarding- challenges in our community regarding affordable housing for our workforce, having developments like the one proposed may make us more attractive to developers for affordable housing contractors. Traffic congestion will need to be a top priority, and the aesthetics of the development must be closely scrutinized by the council every step of the way. In closing, I want to emphasize that the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce fully supports this project. We believe it will bring long-term benefits to our community, strengthen our economy, and enhance the quality of life for all residents. I respectfully urge the town council to approve this rezoning, as it represents a significant and positive step forward for Pine Top Lakeside. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Rob Ingalls.
First of all, I will reiterate that the planning and zoning, uh, commission meeting that was held July eleventh was adjourned as a public hearing to consider a minor amendment to the land use element of the general plan, changing the land use designation from R-LO to Plan Development, D2, and D3 was a public hearing, changing from R-LO to PUD for this list of parcels. So there are residential and neighborhood PUDs, but tonight, it's turned into, they made a recommendation for C1 zoning on twelve acres of that property, and that's what you guys are considering. And being an attendee at that meeting and having some concerns and looking back, I'm kind of puzzled that, uh, the recommendation did not follow what the public hearing was about. It went to C1 recommending. And with that, I would make some comments that the zoning process, uh, at, at least, um, as a recommendation from the Planning Commission, in these actions, the provision of the town general plan and elements thereof, the planning and zoning regulations, subdivision code, and other development standards and policies shall guide the commission and area plans as adopted by the town. They had an option, they could have done some conditional rec- they can only recommend the, the zone change. But there could have been some conditions, uh, that could come about. You, as a council, have the ability to create a development agreement that certain aspects to, I'll say, cover the criteria that's talked about in the general plan is taken care of. C1 zoning allows pretty small lots on an individual basis. And so once a parcel, and I'm not even sure the legal description of the parcel to be zoned, it was talked about, um, as it was submitted, that this will blend in with the adjoining parcels that are commercial. But twelve acres is a huge piece of property, and it needs to be planned out to cover the concerns of the traffic dropping down onto Sholo Lake Road, um, how the land is actually used. And I know, tonight, you figure, oh, this will get worked out in the future. Um, some of the criteria for getting a zone change, the dedication development of streets adjoining the property. I don't know if our public works, Matt Patterson, has even commented on this site plan, talked about where driveway locations, if the road needs to be widened. Personally, I think a sidewalk would be out of place, but it is now going to possibly be commercial property. A trail that might parallel the side of Sholo Lake Road, to me, would be much more appropriate in our community. Um, the impacts on historical, cultural, I know they'll get addressed later, but the, um, I can't help but bring up, I did not even think about the C1 uses at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, because that wasn't part of the posting. It was just a PUD. Um, as far as moving ahead with the zoning, uh, discussion of the relationship of the amendment to the current zoning regulations, the general plan, and the other applicable ordinances, I think we're trying to do that. I appreciated that I had an opportunity to meet with Jeremiah Lloyd, the Director, you, Mayor Irwin, as well as, uh, our town manager, um, in advance of this meeting, but it was one week after the planning and zoning meeting, and tried to express concerns about how fast this is moving ahead, and trying to just say, can we slow this up so that questions could be answered, and we can make sure we're covering the bases as we move ahead. Um, I don't think we have yet. There are concerns that I see within the site plan. Um, I hear talk about adequate buffering. Um, it's discomforting to me to see the density of the townhomes, a hundred-and-thirty residences would be created right up, as it's illustrated, right up against the border to R-LO people. And I, I think that's a, a bad idea. And I hear the buffering, but I'd like to see it before a zone gets approved, or I'd like to see the council condition the zoning. Thank you.
So I would, I would like to point out, before you run off, this is a zoning request. This is not a site plan approval. Those issues, like buffering and all those things that you, you brought up, those will be addressed in the site plan. And we have talked to Mr. Facet about some of those concerns, and, um, I think that he's willing to work on them. And, and until he does his engineering, I don't think anything is cast in concrete. So I think you need to remember that, that we're not there yet. So.
I can say one sentence, please. A submitted conceptual site plan that is drawn out is kind of the direction, the map of how things are going.
I won't disagree with that. This is still a conceptual plan, subject to change. I think what will ultimately come back is something reasonably similar. So that's, anyway. Any other questions or comments at this point?
I just.
Go ahead.
I, I can't help but go back to the planning and zoning meeting, for which we have minutes. And it, it shows your comments in here, Mr. Ingalls, where it says, uh, that I suggest that this commission promptly moves ahead with the alteration of the future land use map and consider this for plan development at this time.
I agree. I said that. And again, PUD was a public hearing, not C1 zoning.
Okay.
I, I have that copy with me right here of the agenda for that meeting, and that's what I read.
I think that, go ahead, Jeremiah.
Let's address that real quick. Uh, it was agendized, as Mr. Ingalls indicated, but the recommendation, through the discussion with the applicant and the intent that the applicant had, the commission felt that it would be best suited to split it into commercial up front and PUD in the back for the townhomes. So that's where the recommendation came from.
And the commission has that authority to do. Okay. Uh, Dave Hendricks, would you like to address this again?
Andres.
Okay. Thank you. Rick Fournau, you're good. Okay. Eduardo Coronado.
Again, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Councilpersons. Um, in addition to the comments I've, I made on, I believe it was D3, item D3, same concerns, um, but I would like to add some more, in what I refer to as conclusory statements, uh, when I spoke earlier. And, and I heard a lot of them, again. Um, and those conclusory statements were, I believe that this is going to bring this. I believe that this is going to be great for the town. I believe, and I think, um, I've tried to, um, contact ADOT. They never call me back. I've talked to three different, uh, residents in the area, and they had great luck talking to ADOT. No problem talking to them, um, not needing a call back. Um, so if this has been going on for a while, uh, in the project, I'll call them managers, uh, that is a big concern by a lot of citizens. I would think that, that project manager, whoever it is, would insist and work on that, because that is one big area that has come up, um, from citizens. And the project manager, manager has resolved it by saying, "Yeah, we're willing to do that. Um, I think it'll work. We just haven't had the, the, the luck of getting anybody at ADOT." Uh, but it doesn't seem to me that, that that's, that's really something that the product, project manager wants to do, because I cannot believe that just somebody who works and is interested in this has, has the time and the ability to get ahold of somebody at ADOT, has had information, but somebody that is really interested in this project and has the time, and this is their project, has not been able to contact them. That's very concerning to me, um, because to me, it just sounds like a great soundbite. I'm going to use that soundbite, and then we'll just breeze my, uh, run by, and, it sounds great. Everybody loves that statement, but I just find it hard to believe that any effort was done. Um, what I'm requesting is that the council table this issue as Robert stated, so that all these issues can be properly addressed. Um, all the studies that I, that I mentioned in D3 are relevant to D4, and those were kind of addressed, um, just a few minutes ago with the project manager, but again, in really lofty ways of, this is going to be great for the town, but no evidence presented that it is in fact going to do that, or that it's going to not devalue the properties surrounding that area. We're not talking about, um, a minimal change. We're talking about putting, changing it from low density to developing a probable, um, big change in the, uh, the number of houses that are going to be, or townhomes that are going to be developed there. And that definitely has an impact. I hope that the lofty, um, wishes of the pro, of the project manager come true, and everybody's property goes up and enhances it. The issue is, where is that, where is any research, um, provided to the council that points to that? Um, and I'm, um, joining with Mr. Fournau that his request be granted, that there should be some way monetarily, that if things get stalled, that there's a way to restore that property. But again, um, the fear of the project manager, manager suing the, the town is not in, uh, good enough reason not to, uh, I mean, um, yeah, not to, uh, table decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Yes.
You talk about, um, he doesn't have any evidence that it's going to not affect. Do you have some evidence to show that it's gonna affect your property value?
Thank, thank you for, uh, your question. Uh, very relevant. And I'll just answer it very, very, um, similar to what I answered to, uh, Council, Councilmember Heisler. This is not my project. I am not responsible for, for putting data out. The people that are asking you to make the change, I'm not. Property owners here?
Can you speak to the microphone, please?
Property members here, we're not asking for a change. The people that are coming to you to make the change, responsible for that. So.
But you're making statements that it's gonna make your property value go down, and I'm just asking if you have evidence to that.
Again, my answer is the same. That should not be my responsibility. I, I am saying there should be a study that says that property ownership in the surrounding areas are not going to be negatively affected. And that should be the responsibility of the people who want the change, not the people who do not want the change.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coronado.
Thank you.
Betsy Pack, would you like to speak again?
I don't see her. Thanks. I'm sorry. Um, Patrick Hamlin?
Good evening, Mayor, and fellow council members and neighbors. One thing that I like to bring up, that doesn't have a lot to do with this specific project, but if you all, we are all aware of the traffic on 260. The traffic on that road, if you drive north, I mean, uh, east or west, if you've got any kind of sense of reality, you stay in the fast lane, because the south, the driving lane on the right side is going to cause accidents. And this is, project would be better off put in Penrod Road than it would be on our main drag. We're all going to be here for another twenty, twenty-five years, aren't we? And we have to look to what's going to be happening in the next twenty, twenty-five years. And this doesn't look to me as though it's going to do anything other than compacting the roads any more than they are. I came out of Safeway tonight going east to our home in Pine Top Lakes, and across the street, I saw weeds that are as tall as I am. This project, if it's going to be regulated like that proper, project, which is called the Pine Creek Luxury Townhomes looks, I think everybody in this council ought to take a good look at what this project's, is going to present, if you're allowing that to happen down there across the street from the Safeway. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy, you're back. Did you want to speak?
Thank you. I just would like to reiterate what Mike Mothbier, Moth, Mothbier, Mothbier said so eloquently, that this is going to bring so many advantages and wonderful possibilities for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Cupid Hayes, would you like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Council. And good evening, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this issue. Um, I have worked in business development, um, and handling mergers and acquisitions for over ten years. I have worked for the city of Kansas City, Kansas. This is unlike any council, um, I have ever stood before, in that every single appeal that has been made to this council, and what was made to planning and zoning, were all based on, respectfully, emotions. They were not based on any numbers. They were not based on any facts. They were not based on any contingency plans that had been done. This is only research and development. And as much as the town is for developing this place and bringing jobs and bringing tourism, none of the information that has been presented to zoning and planning or to this body is based on any fact. It is all based on solely emotions, and hopes and dreams are not plans. In your consideration, um, for this amendment, I would like to remind the body that this is a town. It is a business. It is not a social club in which people get what they want and have changes made just because they are well-meaning and they are liked. I am all for this project, but I do think it is way too early to consider changing the rules and regulations that the town already has in place. And in reference to what Mr. Ingalls said about what was decided back in 2015, the general plan for land use, unless it was specifically erased, omitted, these plans that existed in 2015, unless amended or officially negated, are still in force. And in all of my research, I could not find any of the language saying that what Mr. Ingalls had read that existed previously had been changed or negated. So I can only assume that those rules and regulations are still in force, which means that this project doesn't even meet the minimum requirements of zoning. And what happens when someone else comes in and appeals to your emotions? Are you just going to throw out rules and order and regulations based on who you like? Or are you going to maintain your business standards? No information about any of the objections to this project have been addressed. People have talked about noise. People have talked about light pollution. People have talked about the traffic that this would create. And you are indeed going from low distances, density, to high density, which is again, against the town's rules and regulations. the town's rules and regulations. We've only been presented with a well-meaning general plan. It has no funding. There is no money for this project. What this town needs is affordable rental housing, not residential housing. We currently have commercial space that is for rent and has sat empty. We currently have single-family homes that are on the market and have been there a very long time that sit empty. We have only been presented with a hope that this will develop, a hope that this will bring jobs, but we've given, we have been given no numbers as to how many jobs it would create if it created any local jobs. There are no conditional agreements with any hotels. There's been no discussion with any smaller hotels that would take a project this small. Again, all these decisions are based on feeling and not on fact. And I strongly recommend this body to table this discussion and wait until further information is available so that it can make an educated decision that is not based in emotion. Thank you.
Thank you, Cupid. Karen Rubin?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Sterling and members of council. I do not propose to be the expert in these particular things, but it has been brought to me several questions in regards to the potential for insurability in these new planned units. There is a common, I think rampant running misconception that we cannot insure homes in the Pine Top Lakeside or even in the White Mountains area right now. While that is true, there are some areas that have some isolated pocket areas where we've reduced the new business. This does not apply to new developments. So when you have a brand-new community come in, I can maybe not insure some of the residents that are living in the areas that are right behind that that are having concern. However, when you have a whole new community in that is, has to by law and by the town's rules be a firewise community, that only reduces the fire risk in that particular area to include the homes that are behind it. So these homes and everybody saying that we could potentially build these homes and then not even be insurable is not in fact a factual statement. That actually would make for more housing that is insurable. So some other older homes, particularly a lot of the manufactured homes that we have here that are not insurable, this would give some more opportunity for people to live here. On a personal side, yes, I do agree that we do need some more affordable housing for our community, particularly for, you know, our teachers that we're trying to recruit into the area. But we also need housing for the doctors that we need desperately in our hospitals. There are a lot of things that we cannot do in this area because we don't have any place for them to live, or they live here very short-term in a rental and then they leave us because they don't have a place to go. So I just wanted to clarify that this wildfire risk myth is not in fact true. We can actually insure all of the homes and including the expansion into the commercial side of things. There would be zero chance that we would not insure those. And I can say that with full confidence because in my applications, if I get a question that says this particular area is ineligible due to wildfire, it specifically has language that says unless this is a newly developed neighborhood. So this would not be an issue. I just wanted to come on board and clarify that for you.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Bill Ankrum? I don't know if I said that correctly.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I'm not gonna talk like the attorneys and the developers. I'm talking as a concerned citizen. My wife and I have lived here for 41 years. We're from the Midwest and the drawl here was the four seasons and the ability for our sons to enjoy the summers in the mountains and all it has to offer. What Pine Top offered specifically was not the drawl. Decades later, though, things have changed. I am in full support of the lake development project and future well-planned and vetted growth opportunities for Pine Top. The primary premise for the support is predicated on observations and a realistic view of the present. All of our family and friends continue to spend time with us enjoying the weather, hiking, fishing, and the scenery. They all openly state Pine Top has really very little to offer. White Mountain Boulevard and Pine Top has frankly no appeal. The main highway in Pine Top is a hodgepodge of architectural styles, inconsistent signage, and several sections of business buildings with for sale or lease signs on them, some for years. Others look simply abandoned. Look at the buildings just east of the U-Haul Center. The vacant lots and high weeds across from the 24-hour emergency care. The vacant park beside the Long Wong's. I know the Forest Service owns it, but it remains a vacant eyesore that is in a prime location and could be easily converted to much better use. Go through the light of Porter Mountain Road heading east and view the buildings on both sides of the street. The weeds and business and vacant lot on both sides of Safeway Plaza, not to mention the old Hilltop Cafe and gas station just up the road that has sat empty for years. This undermines and impacts those professionally owned and operated businesses in this area. If ADOT is responsible for cutting the weeds beside the highway, they are not doing their job. Why is this even tolerated? If you live here, you are almost numb to what I just said. If you are a visitor, it gets noticed and it is again not appealing nor presents good impressions or confidence. Visitors and potential residents, whether full or part-time, have choices and options versus Pine Top. Shallow has new car dealerships, a shopping plaza with additional new businesses across the street, two actual pharmacies, Home Depot, Tractor Supply, Walmart, Lowe's, and the two newest hotels in the area, which generate a great deal of sales tax revenue. I would assume that is an important metric for this council. I understand there are several positive projects being reviewed by the council relative to nature and trail opportunities and growth, plus the Chamber of Commerce to better engage with the merchants. My wife and I will continue to live at Pine Top as we have for four decades. But realistically, without enforced guidelines and future growth that parallels development facing the highway, it will continue to negatively impact any road and to the fantastic offerings of the nature in this area. Again, there are other choices and options where towns and communities embrace the future. Simply look at Clarkdale and Cottonwood. The ultimate challenge is what is in the best interest and future for this community. If you do not progress, you will be left behind. It is a competitive and ever-changing world we live in. Lake Point Development, contrary to other comments people have assumed, will generate much-needed sales tax revenue with hotel and retail offerings. It will offer employment opportunities that hopefully lead to retaining our youth from leaving the area after high school. It will also offer upgraded housing that will be populated with people that will further enhance sales tax revenue. It can also serve as a bedrock for other developers and opportunities considering Pine Top. The Lake Point Development is in Pine Top's best interest and will lead to further improvements in the future for the benefit of the residents and visitors for years to come. I do realize you have a lot to work on and plan developments and all the details, but I don't think it was really the purpose of this meeting as it was saved by you earlier. But I don't think there's many developers that are knocking on your door with an opportunity this big that we need to get into Pine Top. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ankrum. We appreciate your time tonight. Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to address us on this issue as it is a public hearing? Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. Council, questions, discussion? Councilor Snitzer?
You know, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna be leaving this council this November, but I've been honored a while and I was on planning and zoning, so I beg a little bit of indulgence to bring some historical perspective into this. The general plan that Rob brought up, we both worked on, one of the most important things it said was ensure that what development happens is quality development. And that's really, really important. Quality development to a community, it's like that saying, a rising tide lifts all the boats. Quality development in a community makes the entire community better. There's a group in this community, a lot of them are personal friends of mine, and they are well-intentioned. They do not see the results of their work the way I do, but I've got a historical perspective. That was our goal in the general plan, what development we have is quality development. That has not been what we achieved. The quality developments, I will call this a quality development. This is an example of a quality development. Significant money, significant thought, yes, it's of a scale. It's not one house on a quarter acre on a one-acre lot. But it's a quality development. It'll bring people into this town. It'll bring tax revenue that we can use to build, fix the roads, hire a cop, do a better library. But that's not what's happened in our town. We've stopped other developments. There've been half a dozen of them over the years that have come up before it and have all been either defeated or defeated through referendum. The anti-development group has done a very good job. They have won. So what have they won? We had complaints, comments, I guess really, but gee, we've got a town of thrift stores. Thank you. You guys gave us those thrift stores instead of quality development. We've got, you know, car parts stores. We've got people that are having trouble selling their houses and our town population has dropped from 4,200 to 4,000. Full-time residents have left the town. We've got closed stores everywhere and people tell me, well, just tell people they need to move into the closed stores. Believe me, if that made financial sense, somebody would have done it a long time ago. There's a reason the Mogi owned tavern stood empty and I hope somebody can do something with it now, but it's been empty since I showed up here most recently. And I understand the concept that people have, gee, now that I'm here, close the door. I got here in 1950. Most of you wouldn't be here if I got to close the door in 1950. This town, I've gotta tell you, this town is a better town because you're in it. That was a, that would have been a very bad thing for me to say in 1950, just don't let anybody into the town. Thank goodness you're here. Appreciate you're here. This town was not such a great town in 1950, by the way. In the winters, people were starving to death. So I really encourage everybody involved to change your approach from stop it to make it work for the people in this town. The concern, you know, people say, now that I'm here, I just don't want any more development. Well, if that's not it, then what do we have to have? Like Mr. Coronado just said, I wanna have buffering. Well, how about would 100 miles of forest be a buffer? Yeah? Is that practical? No. Would a wall be an adequate buffer between a commercial area and the people behind it? We do that all the time along 260. Go up and down and you'll see it. Cement block walls, the buffer is an eight-inch-thick wall, but that seems to work. I'm not a big fan of them, but it seems to work. Between a high-density residential and a low-density residential, you don't need 100 miles of forest. You need something to make adequate buffer and transition. So the zoning and, you know, the, every development that's come along, it's always been, I'm not against development, but this one is wrong because of this, or this one's wrong because of that, or no, let's not make any decisions whatsoever now. And so I would say, let's go back to the spirit of the general plan. It was a good general plan. Make what development we have be quality development that adds to the town. Find a way to make it work. People, if you're living on, most of these people that signed this petition, well, I'll say something else in a minute, as long as I'm ranting, but most of the people that signed this petition, a lot of them are on Sholo Lake Road. I think you've got a concern about traffic. That's a legitimate concern. So let's address that concern, and that will happen in the site plan. I got a whole bunch of petitions. I'm only gonna spout off now because I've said this before. Some of the same, probably the same people had a petition for another development and they just had signatures. We're gonna. And I haven't had time to talk to any of these guys, but I talked to some of the people back then that signed those petitions and they said, well, I signed it because they're gonna put all this low-income housing at the end of my street. Well, that's not at all what was planned. And so I said, next time you do a petition, I want you to give everybody that signs it a piece of paper that says what you're saying. I don't wanna have you verbally say something to them that later on you can deny. Just put it on paper. Here's what's gonna happen. Be truthful and trust the people to make the right decision. So anyway, sorry about the long rant, but my position is, is find a way to make quality development in our town work or we will have more thrift stores, more dollar stores, more closed stores, more weeds in our street, and not enough money to fix a damn thing. So once again, make it work. Don't stop it. Thank you. Sorry for the rant.
Thank you, Councilor Snitzer. Well said. I always appreciate your wise wisdom there. Anybody else?
Since the...
Yes, go right ahead.
Since he got a little rant, I only want a little bit of rant.
Go right ahead.
One rant per night.
Per person?
I just wanted to say a few things. I've shared the story before that my family and I like to travel across the country and I think to several points that have been made here tonight. One of the trips we took was to Florida. We took a road trip. And on the way back, we had a few extra days and we set the Google Maps to no interstates. And so we went two-lane roads all the way back through, you know, Mississippi and Texas and New Mexico and everywhere else on our way back. And one of the things that became very apparent to me was as we're driving down the road, we'd come across a small town that maybe once was something really special. Old historic rundown buildings, kinda to, kind of what I see sometimes as I drive through the old town lakeside area and part of Pine Top. And then, and it was just nothing. There was, there's nothing there. And then you drive another 50 miles down the road and you find a town that looks very similar, but that town decided to move into the future. And they were bustling and they had new business and there was people frequenting their shops and all of their shops in downtown area looked very nice. And that is something that I would like to see for Pine Top Lakeside. Quality development or development and shopping was identified in the town survey as a top priority for the residents here. And then as far as what was said about being emotional, I am not, I try very hard not to be an emotional decision-maker at all. And there's a lot of things that have been said here. There's a lot of pontification that's happening. I've done a lot of soul-searching as I've gone to elected officials' training, Arizona League of Cities and Towns conferences, talking and networking. And at this stage in the process, developers are not coming in and offering all of this data and information and a huge site plan and environmental studies in order to get the money to even do a lot of that stuff, they need to be able to secure the property in order to be able to move forward with securing a hotel chain or finding investors to move forward on a project. We're simply talking about zoning. And if an investor's gonna come in on a project, they need to know, is this project even feasible or we're not putting our money where our mouth is? Right? And so that's down the road. And I guess I would ask that, that the folks here would trust the council, that when this project comes back to the table, when it is in the planning phases, when the data is coming before council, that we're going to do a very good job of vetting it and making sure it is the quality development that we said that we would make sure it was here today. And then finally, I think traffic is always an interesting conundrum for me. I moved here. I own, I don't know, six vehicles. Karen, do you know how many vehicles I own? And I contribute to the traffic and not one time did that ever prevent me or not make me wanna move here. Traffic is gonna continue to be an issue. It's a town with one street in it. I, I mean, one, one comes before the other, right? We will get, as we get more population, as ADOT's able to complete studies and see that the traffic patterns have changed and that the flows have increased, they will build more roads. As development comes in, things like traffic lights that these folks have said they're gonna work to put in there. And I guess the point that I'm saying is every- And I guess the point that I'm saying is, every one of us in this room moved here, and when we did, we created more traffic. And not once did that ever cross our minds. And now that's just one avenue, to Councilmember Snitzer's point, that's just one avenue of us saying, close the door, don't let anybody else come here, I'm here, I'm a traffic contributor, but we, we can't afford to have any more. And I just, I, I can't agree with that, and, and that's the end of my rant, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Heisler. I have a few things to add as well. There have been some comments tonight that we are rushing this process. And I can assure you that every member of this council has taken the time to walk the property, meet with the potential developer, study all these plans, we are not making rushed judgments. This is something that we all take very seriously. You see that we all come to these meetings extremely well-prepared. We've read all the materials, we've listened to citizens' concerns, we've met with citizens. So this is definitely not something that we've rushed. And as a, as a citizen of Pine Top Lakeside who's lived here longer than probably most people in this room, development's hard, change is hard. I mean, I, I see people that have been here longer than I have, same length of time, and these are hard decisions. But sometimes I have to put aside my personal preferences for the good of the community. And I truly believe that that's what this council is doing. And I can also assure you that we will hold the developer's feet to the fire and make sure that whatever comes in is, is built to our specifications. We will ask him to do things like meet with the neighbors and adjust his, his plan a little bit so that we can accommodate the buffering ideas. I can assure you that this council will stay behind that. I think I can speak for everybody safely, those of us that are still going to be continuing, and say that, that we will make sure that this is the quality development that we're all looking for. And I think if we get something like this started, it's going to bring in more development. And, and maybe you don't like it, but I would love it if my kids could come back here and make a living. And I think there's other people in this room that would like it, if they could, if their children could come back to Pine Top Lakeside and make a living. So that's my rant.
I have just, just one thing to say, a couple of things. I'll be going off the council, too. And I would hope that the future councils will continue and not, not consider development a dirty word. If it's done right, it really helps the town. And if there is many movements in the future to stifle development and stifle zoning changes and discourage development, we will die. The town will die, and that shouldn't happen. Developers look to see what a, what a town's appetite is for growth and good development. And we're on the brink of, of not passing that test for some of the developers, and, and that's bad. We need to turn our, the tide a little bit, and I hope the future council will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Smith. Anything else to add? Okay. All right, what are the wishes of the council then?
Motion.
Councilor Heisler.
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty-four, four-seventy-four, approving Z-eight-nine, a zoning amendment from Arlo to C-one for eleven-point-eight plus or minus acres along the southeast corner of Sholo Lake Road and White Mountain Boulevard, and nineteen-point-two plus or minus acres from low-density residential to planned unit development for APNs two-one-two, zero-one, zero-one-nine-A, two-one-two, zero-one, zero-one-nine-B, two-one-two, zero-one, zero-two-zero, two-one-two, zero-one, zero-two-one-A, two-one-two, zero-one, zero-two-two-C, two-one-two, zero-one, zero-two-two-D, from Arlo to PUD for the thirty-one plus or minus acres lakepoint development.
I'll second.
I second that.
Thank you, we have a motion to seconds or further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, don't think we don't listen, because we do, and it's, we, we all take it to heart. Anyway, we're going to move on then to item D-five, consideration of resolution number twenty-four dash seventeen thirty-two, approving a new street name Lodge Pole Lane in the Lakeside Summer Home subdivision. Matt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try to make this quick tonight. This is just a matter of, a request that came to us for addressing, and the only way to do that for this person is to create a road because of the distance. That's all this is, and you're required to approve it, so.
Okay, let's, let's just wait a minute until everybody leaves. Okay. Thank you, Matt, you can go ahead now.
There's not much to this agenda item, it's basically an addressing thing for nine-one-one. We just need you guys to approve the name for it, that's all it is.
Any questions for Matt, comments? Councilor Heisler.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-four seventeen thirty-two, adopting a new street name Lodge Pole Lane in the Lakeside Summer Home subdivision.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously, thank you, Matt. We'll move on then to item D-six, with information discussion and consideration of resolution number twenty-four dash seventeen thirty-three, approving, approving a right-of-way dedication deed for tract A of the Mountain Estates subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You guys remember, we annexed Moonridge Estates, I think that was a, a great move on our part. However, we also talked about taking over the roads. We learned a valuable lesson that the CCNRs had a little piece in there that caught us by surprise, and so this is correcting that. They've go, they've gone ahead and they want to dedicate the, the tract A, which is all the right-of-ways to the town. The next item will follow up on us accepting it for maintenance.
Any questions on this one for Matt? I entertain a motion, Councilor Heisler.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-four seventeen thirty-three, accepting the right-of-way dedication deed for tract A of the Moonridge Estates subdivision, and authorize Town Manager Keith Johnson to execute all documents necessary to complete the right-of-way dedication deed.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion to second, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously, thank you, Matt. Item D-seven, information discussion and consideration of resolution number twenty-four dash seventeen thirty-four, accepting two roads, Big Bear Circle and Little Bear Loop, located within the annexed Moonridge Estates subdivision tract A as category-one roads, by amending the category-one roads list originally approved by resolution number ninety-one dash two-fifty-three for maintenance, rehabilitation, and upgrading programs. Matt.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Basically, this has just given me authority to go ahead and maintain these roads as category ones, is all that is.
Okay, thank you, any questions, comments for Matt? Motion?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-four dash one-seven-three-four, accepting two roads, Big Bear Circle and Little Bear Loop, located within the Moonridge Estates subdivision tract A by amending resolution number ninety-one dash two-five-three, updating the list of category-one roads for the purpose of maintenance, rehabilitation, and upgrading programs, and authorize Town Manager Keith Johnson to execute all documents and direction, direction necessary to complete the addition of Big Bear Circle and Little Bear Loop to the list of category-one roads for the town.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion to seconds or further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously, thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate that. Item D-eight is Town Council Committee Liaison and Town Manager Monthly Reports. Hopefully, we can kind of go through these quickly tonight. Keith, I'll let you go first.
Pardon? Okay. Hopefully, he's turning me on right now. Ah, there we go, I can hear myself, too. I want to thank everyone, as I begin tonight, who helped serve lunch today at the White Mountain Community Center. It's an opportunity for us to serve the citizens, the senior citizens of our community. There are about seventy people that we were serving. And I'd like to thank Mayor Irwin, Councilmember Smith and Phillips, along with several staff members for their work on that today. And we received many thank-yous from them for us coming down there to do that. So I, I appreciate everybody's work on that. I also want to thank everybody who came out and supported the National Night Out event last Friday. It's probably about our largest event, I think we had maybe two-hundred-and-fifty people in attendance. Citizens came out, they were able to interact with various agencies, police, fire, Forest Service, Navo County Emergency Management. There was a lot of fun things for the kids to do. Dan was shooting T-shirts up in the air, a flashbang or two went off, you know, it was just a great night. And I also like to thank your, not, I'll thank the council for their support. You served root beer floats, that was a hit, thank you. Let's see, the Walking Down Ranch, they helped do the cooking for the hot dogs and hamburgers. We appreciate the work that they did on that also. I want to recognize Chief Barnes, Commander Wilkie, their staff. We had a great turnout from our police department, it was great to see them out there. And also thank Priscilla de Legarza for her work to help to organize that. She has not really been with us all that long, but she has been, just jumped into sirens and sleigh bells at this event, and we appreciate her work on that. Coffee with Council has been on a summer hiatus during the summer for July and August, and that'll be starting back up on September the tenth at eleven a.m. at the Pine Top Coffee House. Mayor Irwin and Councilor Krigbaum will be in attendance to answer citizens' questions and, and be able to talk about things that are happening in the town. We've also added another feature, it's called Conversations with the Council. That will take place in the evenings. The first gathering will be from five to seven p.m. on Wednesday, September fourth, at Camp Grace. The focus will be a conversation on growth, annexation, and other important topics. Mayor Irwin and Councilmember Phillips will be hosting that one, and Karen Rubin from State Farm will provide some light food and beverages. We have two other community events coming up. On Saturday, twenty, August twenty-fourth, the Humane Society of the White Mountains will host Happy Tales from ten a.m. to four p.m. at the Orchard at Charlie Clark's. The fundraiser will have a barbecue lunch, a silent auction, raffle prizes, and pet adoption. Then from four to seven, the White Mountain Community Center will host a garden luau and a pig roast. If council would like to attend either event, please let Tony know. Appreciate everybody that came out for the White Mountain Posse, Sheriff's Posse, this last Saturday, that was a great event. I think we were number about nine-hundred in that line, and there was a lot of people that came after us, and that was about two, three o'clock, so I think they did really good. We're also approaching the anniversary of the nine-eleven attacks on our na, on our nation, and September eleventh is also recognized a national day of service and remembrance. The town will conduct a cleanup along our section of State Highway two-sixty, and we're working with the Chamber of Commerce to encourage businesses and residents and churches to help clean up their properties and to reach out and to create opportunities for service throughout the community. The Fishers of Men, Fishers of Veterans for Men will place flags at Jack Barker Park to memorialize the tragic events that occurred twenty-three years ago. Finally, the VFW post will conduct a flag ceremony here at Town Hall at eleven a.m., it's on September eleventh, so we hope that everybody will be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Councilor Phillips?
Just reiterating Happy Tales Auction and Barbecue on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Councilor Heisler.
Been spending a lot of time out of town, I have nothing to report.
It's okay. Vice Mayor?
So with the museum, they've got enough people now, but they still could use help. Volunteers there, but they're open now Tuesday through Thursday from ten to two. As far as Blue Ridge is back in session, to honor Code Talkers Day, there's no school August nineteenth coming up. Something that's been somewhat of an annual thing for the last several years. They call it Blue Ridge Day, August twenty-fourth, from eight to twelve. Light grounds work is done around the, the school, and Blue Ridge families and the community is invited to, to help with that. There's hot dogs and stuff available for that, too. Also, on September eleventh, this goes along with what Grace said early on in the thing, there is a food drive to help gather food supplies for the Blue Ridge Backpack Food Program. And she said more about that, so. And Back Country Horseman is having a cowboy breakfast this Saturday from ten, I'm sorry, from eight to ten at the Nature Center, so everyone's welcome to go to that.
Thank you, Councilor Smith?
Yes, the, the report on the White Mountain Community Center and the, or Senior Center, if you will, just rewind the tape from our town manager, and I would add, thank you, everybody, for making that today a big success. There was a lot of people that ate there, and everybody did a great job of helping out. And Keith Wright, they came, there were a lot of people came up, and, and said, boy, we really appreciate you, you coming to, to, to our center to help serve, and we, we love seeing the, all the armaments that the police chief and, and commander are sporting when they, when they show up. Thank you very much.
Councilor Snitzer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with tracks. Just our usual trail work is continuing, and we've been having very, very good trail crews in, in the twenties, so that's really unusual. And if you haven't been out there, the mushrooms are out, so when we get done with trail work, a lot of us go out and collect mushrooms, so, just, just to let you know. At the Nature Center, programs continue, we just had a nice one on mountain lions, you mentioned the cowboy breakfast. We've just done some work in our front yard, if you will, that, that kiosk that we had, that kind of had some ratty old signs on it and things, we've taken all that down and painted it, and the, we put in some landscaping, some trees in our front yard, just to make the thing look better. The store, if you haven't been to the store, stop by and see the store, it has been going gangbusters. Our sales are many, many, many times higher than last year, and we have really good merchandise, so that's really been a bright spot for us. And we're in the process of upgrading our exhibits with, with more, you know, it's a, it's a big expense, but it's a big upgrade to, to some commercially-prepared exhibits instead of our homebrew thing. So it'll make us even more of a professional presentation. And then, on the Rainbow Lake Coalition, the, we mentioned before that there's a, a grant in progress, a two-million-dollar grant that would put the, the irrigation ditch, the first thirty-five-hundred feet of the irrigation ditch just north of two-sixty, in a, in a twenty-four-inch plastic pipe buried in the ground. And that's really important because it would eliminate, it, it actually would result in the downstream water being fifty percent greater just by eliminating losses and theft. There's a, there's a big problem, they're trying to figure out how to address it with people taking water. Some people think that it's theirs to take. Grandpa took it, Dad took it, now I'm taking it. And so there will be, down the road, those people almost certainly will get sort of legal notices, if it's in a pipe, they can't get it. As an example of how extreme it gets, tonight, we were talking about that, the wetlands area next to the Coronado Law Firm. That extends behind that new housing development. Anytime you see a sea of cattails, you're looking at water waste to an unbelievable degree. And that water comes from Apache Cove, a little pond. And there's water running into Apache Cove and out of Apache Cove down a ravine, just being wasted. And so stuff like that has to stop. Anyway, so the, the bad news with the two-million-dollar grant, it'll do all that stuff, but it requires twenty-five percent matching funds. So they had a, they've already raised two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. They've, they had a fundraiser at Eric Penrod's house on Rainbow Lake last week, and they raised forty, fifty thousand dollars at that fundraiser, so they're on their way, but it's still a long way to get the added money. And let's see, Lynn isn't here to talk about Save Our Park, they had a meeting, and they're- Save Our Park. They had a meeting, and they're still just talking about how they go about raising a couple of million dollars to go toward setting aside a sinking fund to pay for the maintenance of the park. So, there's activity, but not much accomplishment yet. They're going to focus on, their fundraising efforts on next summer.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Snitzer. I really don't have anything to add because I think everything I was going to say was brought up, so there's never a lack of anything to do. We are going to move on then into our next item, D-nine. Pursuant to ARS Section thirty-eight-four-three-one-point-zero-three-A-seven, the council may vote to enter into executive session. Upon a public majority of the members constituting a quorum, a public body may hold an executive session for the following purpose. Seven, is discussion or consultation with designated representatives of the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its representative regarding negotiations for the purchase, sale, or lease of real property. Tonight, we will have a discussion regarding possible purchase of real property. I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor?
I move that we go into executive session.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. At this point in our meeting, we are going to discontinue recording. We will go into executive session. There will be no action. All we will do is adjourn when we come out. So, thank you all for coming tonight.